Some twenty-one-year-old student already wrote the software to weed that stuff out.
The professor said I would never realize it except they had three of them saying.
If you could date, there's another one, you could do art too. You could type in like, we were sort of playing around, but he typed in like Caddisville Falls in the style of Monet, and it just like banged out a picture of like Monet painted in Caddisville Falls.
Yeah, it's really creepy. No, I wonder if we're gonna get a relaxed by robots grave.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. So, I'm reading this article, it says, it's like when we did smaller, when we did older, there's just less things, one we didn't do.
Okay, okay. I'll take care of it. Um, okay, are we all set, Helen?
Over.
Uh-oh. Vivian?
Yes.
Will you open this if you would?
Oh, okay, of course, yeah.
Alison Corvett.
If you could store the camera as I'm here.
Oh, okay.
But I can't get it to bitch to wet live.
Don't worry.
Okay, um, so we're going to begin the welting public hearing, if everyone will please rise.
Chris Aguffo?
Here.
Art Christie?
Here.
Joanne Kell?
John Horn?
Here.
Alan Shiner?
Here.
Sam Spada?
Here.
Vivian Welton.
Recuse.
Would you mind reading the public notice?
Notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a, hold a public hearing pursuant to section two seven four and or two seven six of state law and as prescribed by the district's schedule of area bulk regulations of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant. Regarding an application for a special use permit submitted by Vivian Welton for a parcel located at three thirteen Plank Road, Mount Trumper, New York, one two four five seven, indicated as SBL number fourteen point thirteen dash two dash twenty-six, located in a residential one point five acre zoning district. The applicant would like a special permit in order to convert an existing studio into a guest cottage. The public hearing is scheduled for January eleventh, twenty twenty-three at six thirty at the Shandaken Town Hall. Anyone who would like to make comment regarding this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you can send any comments you would like read during the public hearing to shandakanbldg@gmail.com or P O Box one three four, Shandaken, New York, one two four eight zero. All comments must be received no later than January eleventh, twenty twenty-three at three P M. We did get one email.
Please read it.
Yes, of course, in support. Um, I'm writing in support of Vivian Welton's application for a special use permit. I have been Vivian's neighbor for many years and have always found her to be friendly, courteous, and helpful. I am confident she would operate a guest cottage with all possible consideration due her neighbors. A mature and intelligent woman, Vivian knows how to conduct, conduct herself to the benefit of the greater Phoenisha community. Sincerely, Bill Cola Grande, three nineteen Plank Road, Phoenisha.
Now, is there any communication?
Yes.
Is anyone in the audience here to speak about this project? No, we have many on the docket tonight. Okay, are there any further comments from the board about this project? Okay, I'm moving close to public here. Can I do that? A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's next? Yeah.
They didn't have pointing her on the agenda for the town board meeting, but at the same town board meeting that they appointed you for another term. They didn't appoint her to be the liaison, so they may not have been informed.
I'm not sure she was informed.
That's what I was gonna ask, if, if she had agreed to it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But she wasn't at, at, she wasn't present when you made that decision?
No, she left.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So, nothing was mentioned to her about that possibility? As far as you know? Yeah.
No, I ran into her. I mean, I'm sure that she would help keep me straight on the correct way on the side before.
Uh-huh.
What are we reading?
But you, you, um, you talked to her about it? You mentioned it to her?
I didn't, um, Wajdinski, they said they didn't see it. She just said she didn't know I was. And stout, and we haven't gotten back to them. They haven't gotten back to us.
Oh, oh, this was before the interview?
I don't even know. Vivian was at the meeting.
What's that?
You were at the last planning board meeting, the county one?
I was, yes. Oh, um, so that, was, this was brought up at the last county meeting?
Not this, no.
No.
No, but there should have been, um.
There was, there was something brought up, and I think I s-
Full moon, should have been.
Yeah, so I took a picture of, of their recommendations.
I don't know that that got referred to county. Should it have? It is, yes.
Okay.
I don't think we brought it up during the meeting.
Cliff? That's what they put up for their recommendations. For the full moon. You can hold on. Okay.
Does anyone have their copy of the, of this? Do you come back? I don't see anything in the box. Stop. Give me that.
Sorry.
You have work for each of us?
Thank you. Four on here.
It's a good way for one to chat.
She wishes you.
A, A B F U, that you?
Yeah, I stood up for this. Are you sharing?
Yes.
I don't think we need to. You are.
Do you have any D A C Ds that would help you? Neither the geni or the neph that you got to look at?
What would you like?
Could we look at the same presentation?
It's right there, it's on the board. Here.
Yeah, absolutely.
If there's, there's sign-in sheets up here for anyone that would like to speak about any of the upcoming public hearings? Next to your name, if you would just write the project, since you have four more of these.
There is a sign-in sheet for each.
Oh, there is, okay. This is Wajdinski, the A P F U.
Oh. Your establishment to work. The least you could do.
I was like, oh, that's nice. He's still, oh, he's so, like. So, again, I was like, similar, yeah, sure.
Did everybody who wants to speak for this, for A P F U, sign in?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I have my thing down.
Okay, I think we're at time, you can open the public hearing for A P F U application. We've got Don Brewer here representing the applicant. If you would, uh, mind speaking about the-
Do you want to read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to section two seventy-four slash B of the state law and as prescribed by one oh five, Article Three, Procedure to Fil- Filing Subdivision Applications of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant. An application for subdivision was submitted to the planning board by Donald Brewer on behalf of A P F U LLC for a parcel located at six two eight zero Route twenty-eight in Phoenisha, further identified as SBL number thirteen dash two dash one point one ten, located in a residential one point five acre zoning district. The applicant would like to subdivide the existing eight point seven nine three acre parcel into two parcels. Individual lot acreage to be Lot one, four point one four seven acres, Lot two, four point six four six acres. The public hearing is scheduled for January eleventh, twenty twenty-three at six forty-five P M. at the Shandaken Town Hall, seven two zero nine Route twenty-eight, Shandaken, New York. Anyone who wishes to make comment in regards to this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you may send any comments you would like read during the meeting to shandakanbldg@gmail.com or P O Box one three four, Shandaken, New York, one two four eight zero. All such comments must be received no later than three P M. on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And we do have one email regarding this application. To the Shandaken Planning Board, I live at thirteen nineteen River Road, across the highway from six two eight zero Route twenty-eight. I have concerns about the runoff of water from the proposed building site, both during and after construction. I would like to know how it can be expected to impact my property, which, I'm sorry, which includes a well not far from the road serving my rescue horse barn. If that well is contaminated or compromised by the runoff, it would be a disaster for myself and the horses. Can you ensure that the design will prevent any negative impact from runoff? Sincerely, Donna Sender. Yes.
So, go ahead, Tom, if you would just, uh, run through the project.
Okay, uh, it sounds like the acreage is slightly different. The Lot one is four point five acres, Lot two is-
Can you let's take the microphone closer to you, please?
The acreage is, I think, slightly different than what was spoken there. The Lot one is, uh, four point five acres and Lot two is four point two nine two acres. Lot is mostly in the one point five, uh, R one point five residential. The very back up towards the top of the mountain there, it is, uh, in the zoning, uh, R five, uh, which, which propose here is not anywhere near that. So, Mr. Wajdinski is looking to build a two-family house, uh, on Lot two, using the, uh, the same entrance as, uh, a driveway into his existing house on Lot one. The septic has been approved by the Ulster County Health Department and D E P, engineered by, uh, Mr. Joe Bowick. It was an interesting piece, since we had to, uh, miss the, uh, the utility easement there and, uh, and meet all the setbacks of the zoning of R one point five. But everything was doable. As far as runoff, it's going to be, uh, as to the specification to the building department, which, uh, they have to put up silk fencing and, uh, take care of any of that type of runoff. I don't foresee anything flowing across the highway, but, uh, I don't see, I don't see an issue there, so. Yeah, I can't think of anything else that, uh, I'm missing here. We show a topography at, uh, two-foot intervals. You can see it's very steep there. I show the top of the ridge in, uh, a yellow hashed line. Might not show up, uh, do it on the black and white copies.
The top of what ridge? Oh, I see, I see the coordinate.
Yes, labeled.
When, when you say the top of the ridge, it, it looks like the, uh, area that it's going to be built on is pretty level?
Yes.
And then from there it goes up?
Right.
So, why would it be the top of the ridge? Wouldn't it be going up from that point? I, that's, that's how I'm reading it, am I reading it right?
This right here is the top of the ridge.
But is this going up or down?
Yeah, well, it's the top coming from here up, and then, and then it goes way up.
Uh-huh.
You mean the high point of the property, of the flat, of the flat part?
The flat part, yeah.
Cause it's slow, it's like a gentle slope at that point.
Okay.
And then it goes back and it goes up.
Okay.
Now, regarding that correspondence, we added, are there any culverts going from that property to those under Route twenty-eight for any water to, uh?
Down to the, the south of Lot two, there's a, there's a.
There's none shown.
Yeah, there's a ditch all along there, it's showing on there, it's, uh.
Along twenty-eight, I can see it in the comments.
Three dots. Line of three dots.
We did ask this question last time, there is no covert, nothing going under twenty-eight.
There's a ditch along the outside of the highway. Shows on the map there.
There's really no way for the water to get, oh, to-
To that, to that concerned acreage property.
You see this line right here with the dash, with the dots?
Yeah.
That's a ditch all the way down through.
No, I'm wondering about it going.
Not in front of this property.
And those on the utility.
Of the utility?
Probably. And this, it runs uphill as it heads west, so the water actually runs in that ditch back this way to that collection area of Route twenty-eight.
You've got what?
You're going the wrong way.
What is this sign with this?
It's a utility. That might be.
So, you know, the acreage, I'm sorry, on the legal notice was taken off the application.
So, if it's, if they're not matching, it's just, I literally copied it right off. Yeah. If they're not matching, it's just, I literally copied it right off.
That match well. Maybe that's one thousand of the difference. Sometimes that's a really thin, or rounding, or-
Is there any proposed screening on their house as it is on the existing? Yeah, proposed, on the existing house, it has a pretty line on Route twenty-eight. Is there gonna be any proposed, who's on, to buffer it to twenty-eight? They didn't mention. Should, uh, you entertain that? I'm just asking.
So, it's possible to plant trees that close to the septic area?
Not, it'd have to be in that little, that little circle of, you know, it couldn't go up the reserve area or in that ditch or on the driveway. Who was the first?
John Burns? Would you like to come up there?
Um, I, I just have a couple of questions.
Come up and just introduce yourself, give us your address.
Hi, my name is Brian Batista, I'm at sixty-two eighty-seven Route twenty-eight, across the street, and I'm just curious, um, if you can answer a few questions for the group. What is the size of the house? What is the intention of the property? I mean, it looks like it's a, it's a residential property. I mean, we're here because there's all these Airbnbs coming up in our area, they're like all around and, you know, on weekends, they're like pretty noisy and, you know, we're just not that, you know, happy about another property that's gonna be Airbnb, Airbnb with a bunch of cars. Like, there's one right down, right next to this, two, two, two addresses down. Sometimes there's like eight cars there on the weekends, people partying. So, maybe this is outside of the scope of this hearing, but I'm just curious, like, is that zoned for an Airbnb? Like, what are the restrictions of, if it's a two-family house and, you know, it's just gonna be rented or, 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 you know, sold, parceled off and sold? Is that the intention? Parceled off and sell it? If this is an LLC, it probably is gonna be rented, is that the intention?
Mr. Wajdinski, um, the same kid that, of, of you, um, he built that, uh, or he refurbished that big apartment, the house across from the Emerson. And was, after that, he realized that housing is real needed in this town because, partly because of the Airbnbs. So, he, his interest is to add- So he, his interest is to add a two-family house to rent, rent out so, so families can find a housing.
So for like full-time rentals?
Yeah. Yeah, it was, she was at the moment is, it's very difficult to find rentals or just to buy.
For clarity's sake, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just for clarity's sake, the issue before this board is the subdivision.
Yeah, I get that.
The construction of the two-family isn't going to require approvals from this board, just from zoning and...
Yeah, okay, well, then my question was answered. Thank you.
Do you want to speak?
So then Anna?
Anna's real estate over at sixty-two eighty-eight. So my concerns are probably not appropriate. They're in line with this gentleman. Do you have one question about construction, but again, maybe that is outside the scope of this meeting? Are they able to just dig? There is not going to be blasting? Just, just curious, you know, like are they building?
I mean, Mr. Wajinski is not here to speak. I can't imagine what they're intending to construct is going to require any kind of blasting.
I don't know. I mean, it's just...
It's going to be a two-family home. You see the lot.
It's on dirt, it's not on...
But you know where the lot is, right? So you see this, what you see with your...
You can't, I know where it is, but you can't see it from the road because of the trees?
Is the proposed structure on?
It's, it's, it's that field.
It's in the same sort of...
Isn't it a front hill or is it the clear?
To the right of the existing building.
Okay.
Yeah, like in the, in the large yard to the right of you looking.
So it's not up the, okay, on the same flat, no?
As far as what's underground, no, it's, it's always there, I figure. But blasting's pretty atypical here.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
I mean, I thought it's a long shot, but I'm just, just curious, you know, just...
Very, very expensive.
What's the square footage of the house? Can I ask that question? Curious about...
I don't really remember what it is. Now, is that a scale of one to sixty feet?
So it's, it's actually larger than the existing house over there?
Is he planning to, to live in the original house or so?
We're really just, this is really just a subdivision. The, the building is, I mean, it's sort of a placeholder on this map to show that it can be done and meet the setbacks that are required.
It just shows that there is room to put a house there. The, the only question is the subdivision, you know?
Right, but the purpose of the subdivision is what, I don't know, it seems, it seems like the reason we're all here. It's like why, what's the, what's the reason for the subdivision is, is the question that we're all here for. So like, you know, I guess that was one of my concerns, like you get the, you get the approval for a subdivision and then it turns into a giant Airbnb later on down the road after the subdivision is approved. And it's like, the neighbors aren't happy with that, but...
The, the Airbnb license, I will say, is a separate process. It's a completely separate process. And I believe they're out of non-occupant licenses, right?
We've capped out absent owner, but resident owners can still apply.
Define resident owner.
Resident owner is anybody who owns, lives full-time in Shandaken and rents property anywhere in Shandaken. So they don't have to be on the property. They just have to live in the town full-time.
Full-time?
Yes, it has to be their primary residence.
Oh, primary.
So I have a question.
Can I, can I, before, so I just want to address the subdivision question. I think I have the answer.
Okay.
Just, Donna, if you could just slide over a little, so I could just make eye contact, hello. So he's got the property. It's, call it nine acres. He sees the demand for long-term rental housing. To put a second building, you can't put two residences on one lot, so you divide the lot. When you divide it and subdivide it into two, each one has to be a legal lot. Because these lots are in a one and a half acre zoning for the most part, at four point two and four point five, they would each be a legal lot. So by subdividing, he now has a lot that he can build that second building on.
And you just answered my question.
Oh, okay.
And also those lots could be subdivided themselves as one and a half acre lots could be subdivided at another point.
I don't know that you would do that because you need one and a half acres to build. And when you put the setbacks and when you look at the, the slope behind you, he's at the practical limit of what he could build there.
Right. You've got to be able to get a septic in the new, in the new lots.
And I'm not, I don't know what the existing building is now.
It's a nice little residence setback from the house, from the road, I should say.
People living there?
I, I don't know.
I believe that...
I drive past there a lot to get to my home and I remember they had pods out there a year ago. I think it looks empty to me right now.
It's, I, I don't think anybody... See, that's our concern. It's a very large place. And I'm concerned about it being, you know, Airbnb and, and that we have two right next to each other. This could be, you know, if you could put it in as something else, a two-family house today, then, you know, six months from now, it could be another story. So, you know, that's our concern. We live here, you know. Lot, when we bought our properties, that those, that was one piece, that land, and the man had his lived-in house. And he came across and introduced himself like all the neighbors in the neighborhood do, except for the LLCs. And so, you know, that's my beef. I don't know who, you know, I don't know what this is going to be, what, what's going to turn into. Should I sell my property before, you know, the whole place ends up being a hotel motel, you know?
We understand and appreciate your concerns. We're, we're all locals as well. We're a volunteer board. We're, we can only speak to the, you know, veracity as, as in accordance to the code, not, you know, we can't speculate out what he might do if it's, if they're applying and it falls within the parameters. And they, you know, they meet all the requirements, then, you know, then it can move forward. I do understand your concerns, though.
Somebody mentioned earlier...
He owns a number of businesses in the area. That's why he set up as an LLC.
Somebody mentioned earlier this utility easement. You, you just can't put anything in it.
No, you can't build there.
Under it, under the, but do you, do you have to stay somebody feet away from it?
That, that is the, the easement is the distance away. You can go right to the edge of the easement.
To the edge of the easement, okay, but you can't build anything under the electrical line. I guess that's a power line.
Yes. Is there anybody else on the... I believe we closed the public hearing.
Everybody satisfied? Two questions were answered. Well, what, what goes from, from now, from this point, you decide on, I mean, really, it's just a technicality whether this goes through, is it not? We give him permission to make this one lot, two lots. His procedure after that is going to go to the building department, give them the plans to build the house, elevations, show everything. And then there's another step that might be of a little help to you. If he does want to do a short-term rental, he has to come back and apply for another permit. So it's not, by us giving him this little subdivision lot, doesn't open up the doors to everything else. And there is a tremendous need for long-term residential housing around here. I mean, there, these, these Airbnbs have come up and people are collecting rent for a weekend while landlord charges for a month. So that's, that's a concern to all of us. And we'd like to know who our neighbors are, not just people that don't know the area and are causing accidents or whatever. I mean, they don't know what it's like to drive in the snow, you know, when they drive one day a week, you know, in the country, you know, on a big trip up here.
Donna, do you have a comment?
I was just going to say, it doesn't have to do with the subdivision. But as far as the STR law, this is the first year that we implemented an STR law. So we're just getting through the first batch of applicants. So things are tightening up in that area, places that were being shut down, violations have been made on people. So it, although it might have been ranked before, there is like a rain out there trying to hold things together.
Yeah, I heard that it was getting a little bad at that point.
I don't know how closely you guys follow it, but the town's been years working on the law to, to address this problem.
Um, there's two different sections. There's like an unlimited amount of people who live in and then, and then three hundred, right?
Hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty, three hundred. So only one hundred and fifty applicants are people who live outside of town.
Well, that's what it's given out.
That's all that's given out. That doesn't mean they don't do it, but we monitoring it and we're writing up violations on it and...
If that, if, I'm sorry, we have, we have several more public hearings to get through tonight. If that's it regarding the subdivision, we have motion and a second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, lost track here.
Stout.
Stout. Okay, open the public hearing for... Uh, yeah, she'll read the public notice and then if you would walk through it after she does that. Public hearing for, for Henry Stout, the Full Moon Resort. When you're ready, Olivia.
Notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to section two seven four slash B of the state law and as prescribed by the district schedule of area and bulk regulations of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant. An application for site plan review was submitted to the planning board by Henry Stout for a parcel located at five dash forty-three Valley View Road in Big Indian, further identified as SBL number twenty-three dash two dash twenty-eight located in a residential one point five acre zoning district. The application for site plan review was submitted for approvals to construct an integrated vehicle garage and storage barn as well as a two-story pool house with facilities on the first floor and a conference room on the second floor. The public hearing is scheduled for January eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven PM at the Shandaken Town Hall, seven two zero nine Route twenty-eight, Shandaken, New York. Anyone who wishes to make comment in regards to this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you may send any comments you would like read during the meeting to shandakenbldg@gmail.com or PO Box one three four, Shandaken, New York, one two four eight zero. All such comments must be received no later than three PM on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Any communications?
No.
Does anybody here speak about this project?
Your public notice is very thorough.
We did discuss this at length when Henry was here in December. I mean, I, I personally don't have the need to rehash that.
I don't, I don't have any questions at this time. Anybody else?
Well, the Ulster County Planning Board wanted more details on, on the plan itself. They, they wanted more details. They weren't sure from what information they received exactly where the barn was going to be. So they, they needed also grading and, and lighting plan.
Let's go over this at the meeting.
Okay.
Once we, once we come back to it. I move we close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
You'll come back. This was just a public hearing. Once we get through all these, then we'll come back around through all these again, tonight, yes, at the meeting. Just round one.
Got it. Just as long as it's not another month.
Next is, we're on time for Heidecker. Uh, we'll open the Heidecker public hearing. You would, you'd the notice when you're ready, Olivia.
Yeah, got it. Let's just, go ahead.
All right, notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to section two seventy-four slash B of the state law and as prescribed by one oh five, Article Three, procedure in filing subdivision applications of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant. An application for subdivision was submitted to the planning board by John Heidecker on behalf of Joshua Lawler and Elizabeth Vera for a parcel located on Lasher Road in Big Indian, further identified as SBL number twelve point seven dash one dash thirty-four located in a residential one point five acre zoning district. The applicant would like to subdivide the existing four point four six four acre parcel into two parcels. Individual lot acreage to be lot one, two point two four eight acres, lot two, two point two one six acres. The public hearing is scheduled for January eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven fifteen PM at the Shandaken Town Hall, seven two zero nine Route twenty-eight, Shandaken, New York. Anyone who wishes to make comment in regards to this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you may send any comments you would like read during the meeting to shandakenbldg@gmail.com or PO Box one three four, Shandaken, New York, one two four eight zero. All such comments must be received no later than three PM on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Any communications?
No.
Is there anyone, is there anyone here to speak about this?
I wouldn't mind having my memory refreshed on this one.
Yeah, you want to just run us through it real quick?
Just a refresh.
It's, basically we're splitting the lot. And we would like to create a shared access, two separate driveways, but they're both in the same area to limit the disturbance. Even though we do have, we're a franchise on one of the lots on the road. We, we designed it this way, I think, for...
I remember now. This is like the retaining wall you think you need because of the grade to get onto Lasher Road?
Yeah, this is the map I brought last time.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's the regrading.
Yeah, gotcha.
You're going to have a shared road agreement?
It's, it's two separate.
Well, they're, they're two separate driveways. We're just kind of sharing the entrance area and where, where the driveways will be constructed to, to limit the disturbance around them.
It'll be kind of touching, but you've got the width for two separate driveways. Sure, there's a lot of grading work to do there.
Yeah.
Makes sense to see.
Yeah, there would be less, yeah.
Anyplace it could be less.
Yeah, yeah, since the last, and I told you last time, we had approval from the health department. We now have approval from the DEC for a SWIP, a speedes permit for construction, stormwater management. So that's all ready to go.
I'm refreshed.
Yeah. I move we close the public hearing. No one has any other, nobody else has any questions?
No.
No, no, okay. Motion on the table, we just need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll, we got one more, one more?
One more.
And then we'll go back into the regular meeting and we'll come back through all these again.
We're all caught up now. We have to wait.
What's that?
I think yours got it for seven thirty.
Oh.
You caught up too fast. Come on, guys. You caught up too fast. Come on, guys.
Eleven eleven minutes of free time?
Yes. All right, I got you.
Are we? Oh, is there? There's one for Watanabe tonight at seven thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're stepping.
We're coming back at seven thirty.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're just, we're just sitting here for ten minutes.
Ten minutes? What am I doing? Read a book? Fun of fun.
Oh, it's just, it's just an applicant. Just move up there. Just just want to make sure everyone's. Yeah. Not leave the room, just move up front. You good, Ellen? Uh, we'll we'll open the Watanabe public hearing. Uh, Olivia, read the public notice when you're ready.
Uh, notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to section two seven, two seventy-four dash B of the state law and as prescribed by the district schedule of area and bulk regulations of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant. An application for a special use permit was submitted to the planning board by Mago Watanabi for a parcel located at one thirteen Christie Court in Phoenisha, further identified as SBL number fourteen point one dash three dash eleven, located in a residential one point five acre zoning district. The applicant would like to convert their existing pool house slash garage into an accessory dwelling. The public hearing is scheduled for January eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty P M. At the Shandaken Town Hall, seven two zero nine Route twenty-eight, Shandaken, New York. Anyone who wishes to make comment in regards to this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you may send any comments you would like read during the meeting to shandakenbldg@gmail.com or P O Box one three four, Shandaken, New York, one two four eight oh. All comments must be received no later than three P M. On January eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Uh, anything?
No communication.
Just refresh our memories real quick on this one.
Uh, there's an existing, um, half garage and half kind of pool house facing onto the pool. It has a loft above it and we would like to put a kitchen in it and turn it into an accessory dwelling. He has no plans for short term rent at all. Make that clear upfront.
Thank you for saying that. This is a family thing?
It is a family. He's got kids and it's a small house to start with.
Certainly understand that. Said no communication. Is there anyone here from the public to speak regarding this project?
At the last meeting, I recall we had a letter from the community saying that we spoke to all the people and everything went well.
We, yes, yes, everything went well. We got all the letters back.
Any, uh, further comments from the board regarding this project at this stage?
No.
No. Looking for a motion to close the public hearing. So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So is that understanding that now we can just take our building plans to the building department and get a permit without?
Not yet.
Not yet?
That was the public hearing. Now we have to have the regular meeting.
Oh, okay, sure.
Um, okay. Remember you guys all. All right, we're gonna, this begins the regular monthly meeting for January for the Town of Shandaken Planning Board. Attendance is unchanged. We're just missing Joanne. Has everyone had a chance to review the lengthy minutes from last month?
Do you think next month is gonna look better?
I had, um, no, I lost them. I had one minor comment, Olivia, on page six, I think it was, on page six. Page five. It was just, it was a a simple typo, but it's a number.
Oh.
In the, uh, the, uh, the Campbell, Laura Bruce Campbell. It just says, um, it's an R point one five zoning district and you meant to say one point five.
Oh, okay. Bless you.
Uh, okay. Regarding that, uh, except for that minor change, any other comments on the minutes?
No.
Okay, motion to approve. So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any communications? Business, new business, all right. Okay, then let's jump right into it. Um, we started with, uh, Vivian, you would recuse yourself? Would you, um, walk us through your project again, please?
There should be a map.
Last page of the application.
Yeah, here it is.
It should be in the same. It's in the left, right behind where everything else is in the application. So, um, the guest house is on the side of the house next, next to the property line of, um, Bill Colagrandi, who is the one who wrote the email in support of the application. It's not visible from his house because of, um, trees in the way. And it's not visible from the property on the other side because of the house in the way. And on the back is State Forest. So, um, and there's a large driveway where there's plenty of parking. So it's, it's a small, pretty much a tiny house kind of setup. So it's only suitable for a couple of people to stay in.
Remind me, did you one time had, you had two lots and you've combined them?
Yes, I did.
That's what I remember from months ago. Okay, so now this is one plain old.
So now there's no lot line going through it.
Still, you can see that evidence over there still. Yep, yep. Yeah, we call that as being, uh, the obstacle of the town.
Right.
And what are your intense intentions with this?
It's currently being used as a family guest house and as a, uh, short-term rental, but not back-to-back rentals. It's maybe weekend rentals for the most part when family isn't staying there. My partner has a large family, he's one of eleven children. So we have a lot of nieces and nephews and grandnieces and grandnephews and, um. And I I did get a variance from the, uh, Z B A for this distance between the main house and the guest house.
What is that distance?
I think it's maybe, what is it, about? Yeah, nine and a half feet.
And there's a, is there a bathroom in this?
Yes.
What are the dimensions?
Second last page of the application.
Thank you.
It's about twenty feet long, about twenty by twenty maybe with the that cutout on one side.
So remind me, Cliff, at this point, this will be going on approving the specialty permit? Yeah, that's what we're up to. Unless anyone has any further questions. If it's not pretty mature, I would move that we approve the special use permit. Does anybody have any? Does everyone have any?
Uh, Tom Stain, I was not here for one. Vivian came and presented a case last night.
A second.
One, two, three, four. So we're quarter, we got four.
Yep.
Is this rollable?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Cliff Rabuffo?
Um, yes.
Art Christie?
I'm staying.
Uh, Joanne is not here. John Horn?
Yeah.
Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
And Vivian?
Excellent. I mean, we kicked.
Next was, um, Wodenski? All right, um. Okay, were there any further questions, uh, from the board regarding this subdivision application? Down here. Okay, and looking for a motion to approve the application as as written. So moved?
Cliff Rabuffo?
Yes.
Art Christie?
Yes.
Uh, John Horn?
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
The mile hours in the cops and, uh, Turkey history aside, bring him here or have an office.
Um, do him here as easy as, yeah, I'm driving by here every day. Just Grace will let me know when she dropped him off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Have a good evening. Okay, um, moving right along, we've got Henry Stout for the full moon. Okay, we had some comments from county on that.
Did they contact us yet?
Not officially.
Okay, so they, um, were not clear on the exact location of the proposed barn from the materials they were given. Uh, so they want more information about that. Um, they want more information about the lighting, the landscaping, um, and the grading. And there was also a requirement for the Health Department, but I'm not sure what that refers to. Possibly a pool house?
No, the pool house. The Health Department, the pool house.
Yes, uh-huh. Did you receive a communication from them yet? Of Ulster County Planning Board? Or they, do they sell, send to the applicant or just to the?
Just to the board.
Just to us? Okay. So then we have to.
What's that?
That's existing.
There is two structures in the application. Neither one of these is existing.
Now, we had, um, I believe we wanted these to be on one application. Does that sound right to everyone?
Mr. Stout would like to keep them separate if that's possible. But if they have to be on one, then that's for this board to decide.
I think there was a timing issue. We wanted to get the season going.
They're different, they're different projects with different concerns. For example, the one, the the shop garage is, uh, requires a zoning board, whereas the other one doesn't, for example. The other one requires board of health, whereas the shop garage doesn't. So they're they're distinct, um, which is why I thought perhaps it's best to keep them that way. I didn't want to do it in the process.
Building permits, you can't do that, but I don't know if it matters for zoning, for, um, special permits. Doesn't come up very often, frankly.
Like, I don't think, again, for example, I don't think that the county has any concern about the pool house project. Their concern would be.
Sure, because that's more set in the middle.
It's right, I, the, the, the shop garage is right on the edge of the road.
Property is large enough, this two projects are far, far apart enough. I'm comfortable with them being separate.
All right. Okay. So then we will address the, um, garage first here. So that was grading and lighting.
Landscaping.
Landscaping.
The location of the barn and the, um, Health Department approval for the pool house.
It's a fair comment. We got a lot of detail on the barn, its structure. And and this tiny little thumbnail shows where it's located.
There was a, there was a more than a thumbnail.
Is there something missing?
There is a plot.
Yeah, there is more than that.
I didn't see anything in the materials in my folder today.
There is a full-size map.
He, there is a full-size map. I don't know why it's not here, but he's correct. He submitted a full-size.
I just want, do we have a map? I'm trying to refresh myself where this thing sits on ground. Do we have?
The barn.
We, yeah, we do.
A map was submitted. It's not down here. I don't know why.
I can explain it if you're at all familiar with the property.
Somewhat.
If you're, if you're heading, uh, south on County Route forty-seven, so it's uphill going past full moon.
Right.
Just before you get to the main facility of full moon on the right-hand side, there's an existing stockade fence and utility. Drive past it, file gravel and some stuff. So this is to go, um, in that area.
Before the main entrance.
Before the main facility on the right-hand side.
This is that sharp turn. There's a fence there in that parking area.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's going down here. It drops off.
Yeah, it's hugging the fence and there's a really steeply there.
All right, cool. Thank you.
So this, this was a little bigger, but?
Yeah, I think that's an E and F I live in at this picture here.
Yeah.
This is what, this is what.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was right, it was thirty?
Does the county get a copy of that?
Yes.
I believe so, what are you looking at? Was no contours or anything on it, I'm sure that was their question, that's why the grading comment.
I understand the grading, but the, the location comment, I understand the grading and the lighting.
Yeah, as for that, I'm not sure.
So is that something that then I would deal directly with the county on, or I deal with that through you?
Um, it's just their, it's their comment to us, it's still.
Oh, so you?
It's still us.
The suggestion.
Ah, got it, got it, got it, got it.
So we know where it is.
Got it, got it, okay, so, I mean, do, we did talk about, I'd be happy to run through actually all of those elements again.
Uh, if you would, if you would address those comments in specific, I, um.
Yeah.
How high above the road will it be?
That's a good question. The way, um, the ground floor of the building, a substantial percentage of it will be close to ten feet below the road.
Okay.
There's a, there's a hump in the grade right there, and so there's a cut that the building will sit down in. As I said in the last meeting, Full Moon Resort lives and dies on its aesthetic presentation. So the, the location of this building has to do with our assessment of what is going to be the most beautiful and look the most traditional in terms of a farm, farmscape. So the building sits that, as you come up upon the building, there will only be two feet of, at the highest point in that hump, which is, I'd say perhaps fifty percent of the building, then the grade drops off, then you go back to the full size of the sidewall, but there would only be about two feet above grade. So the building is, the, the face of the building is diminished from the point of view of its perspective as you come up the road. And that's, that's very deliberate in the design. And then the grade does drop off, and as I said, what we're planning on doing is a couple of stone retaining walls, and then like, if you think of a traditional barn, a lot of times the farmers would put them in a little knoll or something, so you had access to the bottom through that. So it's, it's designed in that way also to work with the grade and the landscape, to have the aesthetic of a traditional barn in a farmscape. It's a gambrel roof with, and the idea, again, I think I presented this in the last meeting, but I'll reiterate, the, the structure itself is a metal, is a steel structure, so it's a relatively economical subframe, but the exterior aesthetic will be wood and cedar and, it'll be a metal roof, a galvanized metal roof, which matches the other aesthetic of the pavilion at Full Moon Resort. The idea is to fit it into the landscape and, you know, kind of have that, have it be, it's the first thing you're going to encounter as you come onto our property, and the idea is to have it be, and there's a beautiful kind of view out across the property from there, so the whole idea is to have it be an aesthetic asset as well as a very critical utility.
And the height, if I recall, on that was thirty-five feet?
I think the total height is thirty-five feet, so at that point you would be twenty, you would be, if you're ten feet, you'd be twenty-five feet.
Be like a two-story building from the road essentially.
Yeah. Well, right, because it is, it is a fourteen-foot sidewall, because it is big garage doors, but that's more on the backside that nobody will really ever see, you'd see it from our lower property, but it's really not visible from any other angle, that's all forest preserve on that side. And again, there.
What's on the other side of the road there?
On the other side of the road is, is our property, there's another, there's another fifty acres.
So right directly here is your property as well?
So we, we, the way I describe it when I'm describing Full Moon is we have an upper field, a middle field, and a lower field in that valley, so the upper field is there. That's also where in two thousand seventeen, well, there's a section there that doesn't have anything on it, but just south of that, on that same parcel, is where we had the eight cottages that we built. And then the rest of that is this landscape, rolling meadows. There is a, there's an access road up there as well.
And the, the lighting comment?
Yeah.
That's basically, it's got to be all dark sky compliant, everything's downward facing?
Yeah, again, um.
What you want as well for your own?
I think that that's a theme that I'm trying to get across, is that it's, it's very much in our interest to address all of these things effectively, and I think also, for whatever it's worth, I don't know, but there is also kind of a precedent in the track record for the, the kind of work that we do and the aesthetic that we're trying to create there.
Well, you're your own neighbor.
We, we are our own neighbor, but there's, you know, there's people and good and so on, and, and we're a member of the community, and, you know, we do make an effort to, and like to think that we're an asset to the community, and, and this would be, this is no exception. In fact, I think that it will clean up some of what is not as, not as site, not as site as we might want, and a big part of this for us is improving that image.
Is there anything else on that list, Vivian?
Uh, landscaping.
Yeah, so the landscaping will be the finished grade and primarily, I would say, you know, it'll be sloping landscaping off the backside and grass and seed and marble and, and, uh, stone, stone walls, you know, the, the same kind of motif that you see at Full Moon will be consistent. But no dramatic, you know, no, don't have plants for, in that particular area, we do not have plants with significant planting or so on.
Is there a fence behind this whole section as well?
There is not a fence on the backside, though we would add, we do intend to add the split rail fence. If you pass through Full Moon, you see we have a lot of that, and we're continuing to add it, we love that aesthetic. So, you know, again, the, the aesthetic is the traditional farmscape, you know, the Vermont or the traditional New York Dutch farm idea and the rolling hills and meadows, and that's a, that's a big part of our whole.
Is there, where's the fence planning? Where are you planning to put the split rail fence?
Well, on the, on the backside, so that, again, as we discussed in the last meeting, the reason that, and this is why I went to zoning, the reason that the building is held, held close to the road is so that the utility aspect is hidden from the road. So to do so on that backside, there is a relatively steep grade, so I would put the split rail fence at the top of that grade as a, you know, just a, as a barrier. And there would be a, there would be a driveway, a sloping driveway on the backside, there'd be a flat area uptop, and then there would be a sloping gravel driveway that goes down to that, follows that retaining wall I was talking about, and it comes around and there's a little area below where you could enter the basement of the building. And then it just naturally, the grade from there, from the, from the lowest level, naturally drops down vertical on the lower field. We already have a, what's called a nature trail, you know, our mowers and things can go out that way and access the rest of the property.
Do we have?
Also, the other thing about it is that, that I like is that it gets some of our mowers and things off the road, this project does, it allows that connection to the property.
And I personally don't need to see a landscaping plan for this location, I think that's fine. I think in this case, the county's comments are correct, it's always preferable to have an illustrative site plan, we're talking about what you're going to do instead of seeing it, but been there a hundred twenty-five years, you've proven that you're going to do something of quality, so I can live without it in, in this specific case.
It's all very interesting, but has anything he said lead us to turning down? I mean, it's all, it's all wonderful, but what land, whatever landscaping he wants to do, it's going to have landscaping, and if there's no landscaping, what dirt? If not grounds for denial, that would, I think we're getting into all sorts of details that.
So the only, the other issue is the setback unless someone else?
Well, what exactly did the, I didn't see the paperwork from the county.
We didn't get?
No, I'm just relaying it from the meeting.
Yeah, because the county's going to give us approved, disapproved, or approved of notification.
It, yeah, they didn't?
Majority plus one, we can rule the county.
Right.
So.
Right, I, I think we have enough people here to, if we're all in favor, to override even without having heard from them. The, the issues they have, well, the health department, I have, are you going to be dealing with the health department?
Again, so this is why we have, right now, we're specifically just talking about the shop and garage.
Right.
Which has, there's no water septic concerns there.
But for the pool house, there is, and that's what you would need?
Pool house is going to have to be contingent on DOH approval.
Henry, have you already gone to the zoning board?
Yeah, I'm going, next week I come back for the public, for the zoning board of the appeals public hearing, right? So, yeah, the, the zoning board is considering that setback concern.
How far actually is the setback?
Right here, here.
It's fifteen, twenty feet from the side of the road. So it's, I think it's, I think we're asking?
Would be no issue when they cloud the snow?
Absolutely no issue. No, it's, it's, it's all, it's, it's directly aligned with the existing fence line that's been there for twenty years.
Thank you.
And not only that, but just to lay that concern a little further, again, in that area, the building is sunk in, so there's a, there's actually even a knoll there with, you know, snow, but there's no issue with even most major snow, I would think.
We can, I mean, I'm, if this, I'm, I'm okay to make a motion that for this, that for the barn, that that application be approved.
Well, I would second if you did that.
All right, so I'm moving that way, yeah.
Can we add the condition that the variance is approved?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, yes, yes, yes. Yeah, pending approval for the variance by the ZBA.
And for the pool house, we're not going to vote on it today?
This is separate.
That's next.
This is just the garage barn.
Are we going to vote just separately on the garage now?
Yes, this is just for the garage, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Roll call, is this?
Yes.
Okay, so two separates, um, Art?
Sam, Sam.
I second it.
Clifford Bufo?
Yes.
Art Christie?
Yes.
Joanne Cowb, John Horn?
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Now the pool house.
And the only comment that the Ulster County Planning Board had was this pending health department approval.
As required.
Yeah, absolutely, no question. Just as a point of reference, doesn't, doesn't, the health department, for the health, it's actually going to be twofold, the need for the health department pools on this one, because there's going to need to be a health department approval on the swimming pool, which is permitted for building, but is going to require, because it's commercial for the health department, so that's under engineering right now, and that will go through the health department for the swimming pool, and then in addition, there will be a need for the bathrooms in the pool house, that will be separate approval for that one. And I, in addition, just because, yeah, the DDP's going to want to be also signed on.
So does this application also include the new building over the pool, or is that going to be separate?
This application is specifically for the building.
Over the pool, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I muddied the water there a little bit, but.
The pool itself is already addressed with the building apartment.
Right, but it will need the health department approval as well, so the health department will be involved on both sides of that.
Yes, we're technically just addressing the pool house.
Yes.
So is the pool existing?
We're replacing the existing, but that's not under this application, I'm sorry to muddy the waters with that, but, you know, it is relevant to the overall conversation. So the swimming pool is permitted separately and will be dealt with, with the health department independently, and then in addition, we want to build this building over one end, that is what we are addressing.
What'd you say, over, you mean actually over?
There will be a section, the pool is, is, um, this pool is twenty by forty feet, and then there's a sixteen by sixteen foot piece off the end of that pool, which actually will be indoor.
Okay.
So there is a, a small pool, so it's a, it's a type of, kind of a ski resort swimming pool type thing where you can swim out into the pool. It's a, it's a.
Henry, would you like coming up here and just walking us through?
Yeah.
This, where on this map we are?
We do have a better map of this also.
Thank you.
This one? Yeah, that's great.
Just plants, is it?
Yeah, sure. So this is the big, these are your elevations of the facility. This is facing north this side, which is looking out over the swimming pool and down the valley, and then the sidewalls, and this is facing south, which is kind of toward a couple areas, we have cottages, so this is not, this is the main entrance, relatively low key here, and there is landscaping and planting definitively around this section that will be, and, you know, blue stone patio around, this is going to be a marquee centerpiece of the facility, taking the old.
Henry, was the section where they swim out under?
That is here. So this is the building, and this is a section of the pool that's inside, this is the front wall of the building, so there's a six-foot entrance here that you can swim in to the inside, that's sixteen by sixteen feet of swimming pool inside. So you'd enter the building here, and, and this will be open, so we have locker rooms, sauna, just stairs that go downstairs to basement, and then also stairs that go upstairs to, the, the second floor of the building is just an open.
Space.
Open space, I'm basically calling it a conference room, which if you look at the elevations again, that's a pretty exciting, because this sitting up there, this would be just a really very, very beautiful place, and it addresses a, a need of a, you know, going forward with our business, trying to do some more corporate retreats and things like that, this whole thing addresses that.
There's a second floor in the pool house?
There is, yes.
Okay.
You want it?
The bathrooms are going to be on the first floor?
The bathrooms are on the first floor, here, I'll bring you some.
Okay.
And there's floor plans behind, these are the elevations. So this is the, this faces the sun here. This is the entrance on this side, and then if you look at the floor plans, you can see this is the entrance to the building, and then this is what I said faces the pool, that would be the north side of the building, and this is where you swim in, this is the indoor part of the swimming pool.
I see.
And so as you walk in, this will be here, and you have changing rooms, and then you can also walk out this way and access the.
Oh, okay, so you go outside to get to hot?
Yes, or you can swim to it.
Oh, okay, and this, how do you close this up?
Uh, it's just a, probably if you've ever seen like those plastic curtains that they have?
Flaps, yeah, okay.
Like in, in refrigeration.
Yeah.
I know, construction's not our thing, but I do have, just curious, the type of filtration you'll be using for the water treatment? Is it traditional chlorine, saltwater?
That's going to be, that's a health department issue that's going to be with the engineering, I'm not going to speci, I can't specifically comment on that, because I don't, I don't, I'm not the expert on that.
No, no worries. So, generally for commercial, there's a specific requirement.
There it is, I mean, ideally, I'd love to go saltwater system, but they, they have certain requirements.
Yeah, I don't know enough to, to give any advice, and the only thing I do know is that whenever we have a chlorine environment, having done indoor pools, highly corrosive, so building department, construction has to look at that with extra scrutiny, because it attacks anything metal, it affects structure, it's, it's, anytime you have an interior pool at this scale, it's just.
Well, keep in mind, the interior pool is only sixteen feet by sixteen, but it's relevant, your point's relevant.
Yeah, it's going to be.
I think that the, I think that the manufacturing company of the building can address those concerns in their engineering.
And it's not our agreement, but I just want to make sure you're thinking about it, because it'll prevent heartache later on.
Yep, very much in consideration.
I have no further questions or comments regarding this, just the, same thing with the lighting, you know?
That's going to, yeah, that's within the center of the main facility, the, the pool without lights in it and?
Yeah, still, still dark sky, same thing.
Yeah, it's also near neighbors, and the dark sky is an asset.
I move we approve the application for the pool house. Pending DOH approval.
Second.
Roll call? Clifford Bufo?
Yes.
Art Christie?
Yes.
Joanne Cowb, John Horn?
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Henry, you're, you're outside on our end, yep. Go ahead, Donnie.
So I already have one building permit now, and now these are two separate, right?
That's correct.
So we're going to have about three buildings permits, like, if these both come to an approval, they can go on one building?
I think, I think in this case, technically we're not supposed to have more than one permit. permit.
Right.
That's Chanae, you think. I think in this case, because the projects are being approved by this board, he may, it's up to you, but at your discretion, we'd say it's all right to have. And I know that Mr. Scott is responsible about the permits being renewed, so we need to...
Oh, we're gonna, yeah, this is the one, you know, one for each, go on. We don't have...
We're gonna have three.
Well, we, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to redraft the swimming pool permit...
We could do that.
Well, if they came through at the same time.
The, the swimming pool permit came through first, but if you wanted to redraft the swimming pool permit to be one with the pool house?
That would make sense.
Now, we have approval, then we'd have one for each location, which my idea...
That makes sense.
All right, we're not set for that.
We can do it.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you all so much.
Next week.
Thank you.
Yes.
Six forty-five.
Got it.
Don't forget your jacket.
Yeah.
All right, next is, hi, Decker. Any further questions, comments, musings? Stories about the, stories about the neighbors?
I move we approve the application for subdivision, are we, we're not waiting for that, or anything, right? We're good, yeah? Simple. All right, give me a second. Arthur?
He waves that.
He waves, I'm sorry. Okay, you wanna know?
All right, Cliff Rabuffo?
Yes.
Art Christie?
Yes.
Joanne Kalb?
John Horn?
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Thank you again for the, you're all set, can you give her the thorough map? We appreciate that.
And you're gonna give me your copies, the MyLars and all that, give them to me?
She'll let, she'll let me know once they're dropped off and then I'll sign them.
Absolutely, is there any, there's nothing to add or why, is there anything else that would not, we're, we're good as, as it stands?
I didn't see anything.
Okay, I think we had...
No, we were, we did, and we have reviewed the EAFs.
Thank you.
Okay, who's last here? Watanabe.
You made a drift.
I did.
I think we feel...
I have a question before we start. The spelling of the first name, it's on the applications written M A G O?
Margot?
Margot, yeah, is that correct?
That's what he calls them, so if I have the...
Because it sounds like a Japanese name, and Watanabe is definitely a Japanese name, so it, I doubt it would be Margot, so...
So, here is the thing that's in the, in the county, so that's...
Oh, it says Junko, so that's a different person, yeah. Okay, so it's, it's say Margot, right here, okay.
I've got, I've got no comments myself, anybody else?
Nope.
Sam? I move we approve the application for...
Second. All right. Cliff Rabuffo?
Yes.
Art Christie?
Yes.
Joanne Kalb?
John Horn?
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
Yep.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Now you can go. Yeah, there you go.
Good to go?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
County liaison report?
Okay, other than the full moon that came up, which we addressed, there were two things of note for the town, financial, well, actually, there is a, it's a climate smart community that they're trying to organize each town to join that, that group, and it's very, it's based on the same model as the housing smart community. No, I've got it backwards. We're already in the climate smart, and this is the housing smart, so, okay. So, it's about, several towns have joined, and we are being encouraged to join. The town board already has the climate smart template, and there's a certain number of hoops they have to jump through to get to a certain status to, to qualify for certain funding that they can apply for, so there's a whole process. And it's gonna take a while to get from start to a high enough status to really get significant funding, but it's worth doing, and there is money available. And the other thing is, there is money now available for the repair of bridges on non-federal, they're non-federal bridges, in other words, local bridges. They have to have a bridge number, so not, not just any old bridge, they have to have a bridge number, but there is funding available to repair such a bridge. So, I passed that on to board members, passing it on to the highway department.
I have a question for you. Did we have that housing smart, whatever, do we have to change our building codes?
No, I don't think so. I, I mean, there was nothing mentioned about changing codes.
Well, it's a relevant question.
It is.
If, if housing smart, essentially, at the end of the day, if what they're looking for is multiple units in one structure, the town of Chanae doesn't allow for that. That kind of construction doesn't allow for you.
I, I, I don't know if they're going into that kind of specifics yet at this time, but since I don't really know anything more about the project, it's a good question. So, I guess the town board will, will, you know, find out more about it, probably join, because really no reason not to.
The reason not to would be is if they impose restrictions.
Well, then we just drop out of the program if it comes to that. I mean, if, if, the town board will always have the option to leave if there is, you know, a problem, I would...
Yeah, these, these, this type of program generally looks for higher densities. That's how you solve the housing problem. And it could be antithetical to our, to our code and the culture of this town. So, it just needs close reading, that's all.
Right, right.
Put the word smart in there and that...
I like it already.
That makes it smart.
See? I wish people used the word smart when they're talking about me a little more often.
You could buy smart...
I don't, I don't like to people I can vote against something smart. I just wanna make one further comment. We didn't read the EAFs in as we typically do for all these projects that we approved tonight, but I just wanted, in the minutes that we did review them as a board, and we found them to be fine.
Good point.
Didn't you guys read the EAFs in during the presentation last one?
Not all of them, no.
No?
No, we reviewed them. Anything else?
Since I wasn't at the interview for our applicant for the planning board, and in the minutes, it was stated that she was gonna be considered for being the liaison to the county, I just, I, I need a little feedback about what the intention of the board is, is that you're going to...
Because you sit on the planning board?
No, I, I, that was already said in the past, but as far as your impression of her, as to whether she'd be a good candidate, whether she had expressed interest in being the liaison?
I don't wanna discuss that, not me.
I mean, if, if we wanna go into executive session, I, I, since she would be taking my place, and I would have to take her through the process and introduce her to the county, and I don't know anything about her, never met her, don't know anybody who knows her, I'm pretty much in the dark, and, you know, I understand why there's a feeling that there's a need for privacy and being able to speak freely in personnel issues, but I don't have a means to be in on the interview, because it wasn't taped or it wasn't on the video. So, I'm kind of, you know, I'm at a loss here as to whether I should even recommend her for the liaison. So, that's why I need some feedback in some way, I mean, if...
Do you guys wanna discuss this at the workshop?
Yes, for you.
Because we rehashed something that we did in executive session.
Right.
Right, because I, I need some way to know what was said and, and what, how to proceed.
Yeah. It's a reasonable ask.
Both points.
But the town board?
We reckon, we make our...
He can't discuss it right now.
No, I, I, it doesn't involve John, because John was already recommended, and that decision was already voted on, I presume. This is for the liaison, yeah.
The discussion that took place was involving John and this woman.
No, I, I think if, if the board recommends that she be offered the liaison job, which is what's in the minutes, and what was said, I guess, after the executive session ended, then there needs to be another action taken. In other words, she needs to either be offered or not offered, and, and then she needs to decide whether to accept, and then the board needs to be informed, and then the board needs to vote to, to...
I know, in the past years, they managed to manage to, but then, nobody asked for this, they just introduced the person, they showed them the roles, and it was good. Is there a vacancy, or you're it?
I'm it, I'm it, so if, if she's going to replace me, then that means I step down and she takes my place. And then, I, I think it's a good way to introduce somebody to what the planning board does. It would be nice if she had some experience, it's not required.
Well, I think it's late tonight and everybody's tired, so let's, either workshop or get to the session. And we don't, you're, you're currently serving as the county liaison, we don't necessarily have to do anything.
Right.
So, let's, let's not. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, has, has the board voted, the town board?
We didn't make any recommendations.
Oh, we did not.
This is just a discussion, yeah, there's nothing that has to happen here.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I will try and find her phone number and invite her to the workshop if you'd like. Is that what we're saying, that it'll be a conversation held at the workshop?
I think among the board.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, because we're discussing whether to...
I honestly don't know if she has an interest in it.
It was just something somebody said, it's not, you know, it's not even...
See, it was my impression that you're gonna actively solicit someone to take my place.
I, I guess, we're not, we're not kicking you out.
No, I mean, but then, you know, then I'm, I'm not hearing anything there, so...
Isn't there an alternate to your job?
Sam is the alternate, and Sam is rarely available.
We discussed this after the executive session.
This is all the...
We discussed this portion after.
I mean, now.
He means now, that's less, end of...
All right, did I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I've been waiting.
Second.
I said...
All right.
Lady with those motions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the date of the workshop?
Maybe two weeks from now would be the twenty-fifth, right? So, there has to be the twenty-fifth, unless it's thirty-two days of January.
Right now, there is nobody coming before this board to that workshop, as of today.
As of today.
And I just ruined it, didn't I?
That won't hold.
Now I'm gonna get twenty phone calls. I just ruined it. And that's on me, if this happens again on the twenty-fifth, that's on me.
All right.
Okay, but the issue that we just discussed, that we're gonna bring up at the workshop, I think that it could be postponed if there's not, no other reasons to have a workshop.
That's true.
No, that's going down. What is that? Is that one side? Screen cell? No, it's not, that's Tony, it's on the top. I know.
Yeah, I know, yeah, no, it's not like a good time for that.